Hey guys, it's your girl, Antonia. We are here on Amped Up Live. As you can see, we have an amazing guest in the building, Mr. Marcus Smith himself.
What's up?
The candidate here for Melbourne City Council District One.
That's right, District One, Melbourne City Council, let's go.
How are you doing?
I'm doing well. Thank you for having me.
Yes, I love seeing you here.
Man, I'm loving to be here. It's all professionally set up. You know, you've been doing your thing for a number of years. Amped up, let's go.
And thank you for my shirt. As you can see, it's all nice and beautiful and QR code on the back. Yes. So tell me, wow, are you originally from Bavard?
No, I'm not originally from Bavard County. I'm originally from Atlanta, Georgia. The military is why I arrived in Bavard County in 2010. I was working with the Rescue Wing over at Patrick Air Force Base at the time.
Nice.
And so now you know Patrick's a Space Force Base.
Yes.
And I was there as the Director of Logistics with the 300th Rescue Squadron from 2010 until approximately 2018. And I deployed to Iraq.
That's sick. Well, welcome. Thank you for your service. Thank you for your service. Wow. Why or what inspired you to get into, I guess, city, local government, or you know, that field?
Well, I, you know, we talked a little bit earlier. So I've been a leader, community leader, I would say for the last 20 plus years. And I've enjoyed just giving back and serving. And really, I'm more of a, I'm a results-driven person and want to be a part of helping to shift the landscape, achievement focus, and really want to do my part. Because I know a lot of times people deal with frustrations and they don't, they're not, feel like certain things are not able to happen. But I just feel like I love being a change agent and being a part of doing what I can to shift that perspective and just work. So for me, running for city council, I've been a part of the Melbourne Planning and Zoning Board for the last three years. Actually, I'm the Chair of the Planning and Zoning Board. There's a lot there. So when I retired from the military after 30 years of service in 2021, I decided to volunteer for the Planning and Zoning Board. And while being on the board, I started to get a feel of how the City of Melbourne operates. I started to get a feel, being on the board, I started going to the city council meetings.
Right.
We had our meeting twice a month, Planning and Zoning, Melbourne City Council meets twice a month. I started going to their meetings. So I've been to their meetings the last two years just so that I could really understand things that we pass at the Planning and Zoning Board, how it moved through the system. It got approved at the city council. And then I started liking it.
Wow.
You know, and funny enough, I've invited people to the Planning and Zoning Board meetings and to city council meetings. And they go and they've never been before. They're like, oh, this is pretty good.
Right, right.
So everybody needs to come to a meeting, city council meeting, county, city, one of these board meetings. I think you may like it more than you realize.
I bet, I really bet. Well, before we get into why, or you know, I do want to know why people are, I guess, straying away from city council meetings, if you have a, if you know. But also I want to know, before you got into city council and the board, what were some of the leadership qualities or what were some of the leadership events or programs done for the community?
Now, that's a really great question. And thank you for asking that. So I've organized, I was the initiator of a 5K that was called a Rescue Warrior 5K, that morphed into the Armed Forces Day 5K. Did that for about six or seven years. I organized golf tournaments. I've been on several boards. I was on the board of the Space Coast Cultural Arts and Business Organization, Sakabo. I was the president of Kapak Fasak Fraternity and helped to revitalize that organization and get it more engaged and more involved in the community. I've helped in South Melbourne quite a bit. I'm the first Vice President of the Historic American Legion Post 191. And I do say historic for a reason. I've been involved in that for the last three years also. And you know, we'll talk about it a little bit later, but we just started inventing that Cabo Bars Got Talent at that particular American Legion as a part of revitalizing. So you asked me, I've been involved. And so me running for city council was not because I wanted to be on that platform. It was just me for a natural progression of who I already was, the type of leadership I've been doing in the community. And I just felt like that would be another place for me to learn, be able to listen to folks, be an advocate for citizens in the community, and then also lend my hand, my brand of leadership, and try to make a difference.
I love that. Wow. You're so passionate. You're going to cry. You're really so passionate.
I love, I just, I love doing what I do. I love working with people. I love, you know, and I realize that visionaries, people who have a vision, but that's one, that's just the start. But people are able to take their vision and manifest it into the world. I mean, that's a gift. And we cannot take that for granted. And so sometimes I run it, I encounter people, they have these ideas, wonderful ideas, wonderful visions, but they just don't know where or how to make it happen.
Right.
Right? So if you could get with these people and y'all could get together, like some things we just talked about earlier, and we can make it happen.
Ooh.
Woo, right?
It's gonna...
What about that testimony in the end?
Yes. This here is documentation of what we'll be able to come. What will come, okay?
Amen.
So yes. So explain to me, you have your candidacy as a city council.
Yes.
What, what are some, I guess, some challenges you're facing being, you know, are you running against anyone or?
No, I'm currently not running against anyone. The qualification period is going to start pretty soon, in August, and it closes out August 15.
Okay.
And if I'm still not running against anyone, then you know, I will, for that part, pretty much be the only candidate
Right.
for that position. So you know, and we look forward to that day arriving.
So why should people pick you? I see you have four pillars that you know, you are, is your message. What, what is that? Explain to me.
Ah, thank you. Yeah. So my four pillars of progress is, it's the representative of the type of community leader that I've felt like I've been the last, since I've been here in Melbourne, 2010. But I would say I started to really get involved in South Melbourne around 2021, no, 2020. I was involved in the census.
Oh.
I got involved in the 2020 census.
Okay.
And by being involved in the 2026 census, I encountered some wonderful people, organizers who were trying to do several things. And so, and so for me, from that point on, I was starting down a path of being a leader here in the City of Melbourne and in the community. You know, city council was necessarily on the radar at that time.
Right.
But from that point, I started to identify areas where I wanted to lean in and be able to do my part. So my four pillars of progress sort of represent what I feel like, things that I've identified with that are progressive, that will help the city move forward, that will help a community move forward, that will help the city to become more vibrant, more resilient, more... One of the reasons I decided to stay is I love this area. I love Melbourne. I'm originally from Atlanta, but I just love it here because it offers so much. But I just think that with this untapped potential, we got to do more. So those four pillars, first one is community economic development, right? You know, and that has, it says community economic development, what that is involved with is there are areas of Melbourne that we really need to, you know, tap into some of that potential.
Right.
Right? Because if we can help multiple areas of Melbourne improve, that is going to help the city overall.
For sure.
Right? So community economic development. Number two is small business and nonprofit development. I've done a lot of work with nonprofits, and I've seen nonprofits who just don't really have either the business acumen or the administrative acumen, or the ability, the resources to create content, or whatever it is that they need to do. Their mission is really good.
Right.
No, but we have to help them to bring that to life, right? Back to that point. And then businesses, there are areas, I really believe that if we help more businesses, we could help with the unemployment situation.
Yes.
We can help with the crime situation. We can help with some of the frustration and hopelessness that citizens may feel because I'm going to help you to develop. Here we are in your business, right? You know, just being able to live out your dreams and things that you have on your mind. It's an artistic expression that goes along with that, right? So small business and nonprofit development. Number three is workforce development. So maybe you don't want to be an entrepreneur. Maybe that's just not your calling. But we live here. Another reason why I decided to stay, I have an electrical engineering degree from Georgia Tech in Atlanta.
Ooh.
But one of the reasons why I decided to stay is because we live in one of the most technologically advanced areas in the country.
We absolutely do.
This Space Coast is unlike anything that anyone has ever seen.
And it's growing.
And it's, we're just getting started.
Yeah.
With just two to three rocket launches every week now.
Yeah.
Right?
Oh, I can feel it. I'm always like, oh!
It shakes the building, right?
My dog barks, it's insane.
There are people that need jobs. They just need to be trained.
Absolutely.
There are employers who need good people.
Right.
We just got to help to bridge that gap. And workforce development is a way of bridging that gap. And not just that, what about, you know, let us train you to do HVAC, let us train you to do electrical, let us train you to do plumbing, let us train you to do IT.
Right.
You know, and then now you have the marketable skills that pays the bills. And you never should have to, hopefully, never deal with such a situation where you don't have enough money at the end of the month. Because you could, we can hope you get a living wage job, not just a minimum wage job, but a living wage job so you can afford the quality of life that you want to live.
Absolutely.
Right? And number four, after workforce development, is near and dear to my heart because that really sort of represents my, my journey to become a city council. It's called Civic Education and Empowerment.
Okay.
I really feel like that we could do more to help people understand local government by either joining boards, by attending different meetings, by getting to know their city councilmen, their county commissioners, their mayors, you know, we get so enamored with the national politics, the president and those kind of things.
Locally matters the most.
Matters the most.
Yes, absolutely.
Local politics matter the most. So civic education empowerment is going to be an attempt to get people plugged in and engaged and local government at whatever level, because there's enough space for everybody to be involved.
Right.
And then, once you learn how certain things work, that reduces your frustration. You fear it less.
Absolutely.
Right? Because you have fear of what you may not know. But now you start to know a little bit, you have a little bit more confidence. Put your chest out a little bit more. You go to a meeting, your voice could be heard beyond the vote.
Right.
Because sometimes we may need to move beyond the vote and be engaged on a continuous basis. So that way your voice could be heard even outside of the voting polls.
Right, right. Well, knowledge is power. And you know, even an episode like this, where you know, we're expanding people's mind to just know what they have, or what the power they can deal, or you know, just connecting with you is just right there in your palm of your hands, literally connect. And that's the benefit.
Yeah. Do you normally have topics? What kind of topics do you normally deal with on your podcast?
It depends on the people we bring on. You know, it can be, it can be politics, it can be entertainment, it can be current events, it can be sports, it can be anything. You know, it just depends on the energy that we can bring into it, you know. Why do you ask that?
I'm just curious. So do you, so politics, when you say politics from your standpoint, I think I know you had the Mayor of Melbourne on recently.
Yes, I had Kenny Johnson Prior, I had Lavander Hearn from Coco, so Palm Bay Coco. So I try to tap in throughout Bavard. Definitely want to get Titus Phil, you know, Grant, you know.
Gotcha.
But that's, that's the goal is to, you know, just, just different, whether you're a Republican or Democrat, just to get that knowledge out there.
Information, knowledge is power. So do you ever have, and this is something I've thought about, a town hall meeting format?
No. What is that? That's intriguing.
So I'm the type of leader where I want to hear. I want, I work with people so that I can learn some of the things that they may need.
Right.
Whether expressed or unexpressed, right? You just kind of get, pick up on the dynamic. So doing a town hall format, and I can show you some examples of that, where it will almost be a panel of people.
Okay.
And they could ask questions.
That would be awesome.
And, and I, and leader like myself or others can actually hear
Right.
concerns in the raw.
Yeah.
Give it to me raw.
Yeah.
You know, like ODB.
That would be, that would be sick. Have like, yeah.
Yeah.
And that's, you know, that's another way to get the message out there to people that feel they connect more with maybe Amped Up Live instead of going to the city hall, you know. And you know, so that's important of why people should have platforms, you know, to just get the message out there. So, thank you. Thank you.
I love it because growth, growth begins growth.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. So I do see you have Kapak Alpha Sai, is that what that is? So you are also a part of that. Is that here in Space Coast that you're representing? Was that from Atlanta? Or how does that work with the chapters?
No, it's here in the Space Coast, Space Coast Nukes. I'm also a part of the Masonic Lodge.
Okay, okay, okay. So do you shimmy as well?
I've been practicing my shimmy, you know. I'm a little bit older. I'm an old school noob, so I do that old shimmy, but I'm working on a new shimmy.
We might have to see that, but wait for the next episode.
I'm not going to see that today.
No, 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 next episode.
Another time.
So being in that, those two type of, you know, organizations, how do you feel that also plays a part in your self-development?
Oh, that's a really great question. I believe, and you've said it a few times, connections help.
Right.
You know, and connections matter. But along with connecting, you also have to be the type of person that, I just saw this, the CEO do a presentation. You have to have what he called a learner's mentality. Like if you feel like, you know, you, you to be all the end all.
Right.
You know, you're not, you're not listening. You're not ready to learn. You're not ready to be a part of the solutions necessarily. You think you know everything. But for me, the more I learn, the more I know, the more I realize I don't know.
Absolutely, absolutely.
You know, so being a part of organizations allows me to sort of be around other men and women, and in particular, other black men, and we're able to be supportive of one another, learn from one another. Because anytime you have a project and, and things need to be done and there's challenges, like we got some challenges we're going through now, you learn about yourself, hopefully. And you also learn about the other people that you're going through the challenges with.
For sure, for sure.
And then when you get to the finish line, everybody hopefully celebrates.
Yeah. Being a black man here in Bavard County, are you, have you ever faced any challenges? Or, yeah?
Yeah, I mean,
In the...
In the area of blackness?
No, in the area of the government, local government, in your, in your field. Did you, did you ever feel like any doubt, meeting people, you know, like, oh, I don't think I should be here? Did you ever feel, feel that at all?
No, I, I've never personally felt that. And I think we all, in our humanists, can have areas of self-doubt or lack of self-confidence. But it's not typically because I'm in an environment that does not want me to be there, won't allow me to be there, or where I'm not at value at. You know, my years in the military, I retired from the Air Force as a Lieutenant Colonel.
Yikes. Wow. Yeah, so you definitely have no fear. You don't see color. So that's really good. That's, I like that. You don't?
No, it's different. I do see color. And I celebrate the difference. I celebrate, you know, I actually, I actually, you know, I actually believe in those differences can create a synergy. And so, you know, because any, anytime I hear people say they don't see color, no, God created all of us different, and that's not the issue. But see me, value me, and then, and then if there's something individually, don't let it be because of my, you know, skin color or anything like that. I mean, we should evaluate people on their trustworthiness, their work ethic, their, you know, all those kind of things.
Yeah.
So that's the person that I always bring to anything that I'm doing. I'm bringing a person that's going to be willing to work hard, willing to adjust, adapt to the situation where it's necessary, and then also lead when leadership is necessary, and listen when it's time to sit back and listen.
Right.
You know, and empower others when it, when I, when they're stronger or when that's what's needed for the situation.
Yeah, wow.
You gotta, you gotta be adaptable.
For sure, for sure. So judge me on my character and, you know, my ethics.
And my results.
Yeah.
You know, all my results.
I love that, I love that.
But I see your skin color, I see it.
Yeah. What color am I? I'm joking, I'm joking. So even with the growth and the expansion of how Bavard is growing, especially Melbourne here, how do you feel small businesses, or if, I guess, do you feel like this will benefit small businesses with, I guess, the competition of bigger businesses, especially with the expansion of Space Coast?
Yeah, yeah. So another part of a growth mindset is to not have a scarcity mindset or not, or not think that we're all fighting for scarce resources as opposed to have an abundance mindset to say that there's more than enough for everybody out there.
Right.
So let's go and create quality businesses because you can't, if you do anything and it's not quality, you know, it may not survive. It's going to get judged, and it may get judged harshly. But our mother believed that if you create quality opportunities, provide quality opportunities, create quality businesses. And so a lot of work I do with nonprofits is to help them with their value proposition.
Okay.
Do things in such a way so that way you could break whatever stigma you have to this point.
Right.
Let's do stuff different.
Yeah.
Entrepreneurs, develop entrepreneurs who are going to develop businesses, right? Then I believe that it would be successful. Because there's a theory, and there's a guy, I love, I love reading books.
I was going to ask you about books eventually, too.
Yeah, John Hope Bryant. I really love John Hope Bryant. His book that I fell in love with is called How the Poor Could Save Capitalism.
Wow.
Very, very powerful book. And he's picking up from Dr. King's book, Where Do We Go From Here: Community of Chaos. And Dr. King, right before he was assassinated, he started moving to the Poor People's Campaign, which is more about the socioeconomic development, socioeconomic empowerment, and just helping folks to move, really move beyond the silver rights, into silver rights, you know, and doing things in such a way that economic empowerment, because if I go and I help you...
And did you say civil to silver? Wow.
Silver to silver.
Wow.
Did I say that right?
Yes.
You know, I'm from Georgia.
No, yeah. I just want to make sure I heard it right. Civil to silver. I like that, I like that. So carry on, I'm sorry about that.
Yeah, no, that's good.
That was...
That should be your...
Yes.
So, but if we do things in such a way that I help you, help yourself individually, your family, your community, and you're given jobs, and, and, you know, a lot of this is, is not utopian think as much as people think. You know, there's a lot of realistic value to doing this.
Right.
But if we do this, and, and now the community comes up, you come up, now you have more, you could be a better consumer. You could be a, you have a little bit money to, money to spend, so you're not so worried about different needs. So the premise behind the Poor People's Campaign and, and John Hope Bryant's book is let's go and create, as opposed to 500 credit score neighborhoods, 700 credit score neighborhoods. Let's go and let's create businesses that are offering quality jobs. Because if I create five businesses in South Melbourne or in the community, and then they're supporting one another, that money's recycled.
Yes.
It's recycled.
That's absolutely true.
So it, we, that, so the question starts to become, is it hard? Yeah, it's not easy. But should we try to do it? Hell, yeah.
Yeah.
Let's try to do it. Because I think that that alternative is better than the struggles that we may currently be dealing with. But, you know, my thoughts.
You did mention Bavard's Got Talent. Can you give me a little bit more about that?
Yeah, Bavard's Got Talent is a new initiative that was the revitalization. Of course, you know, for me, Air America's Got Talent.
Yes.
And again, I mentioned I was on a board with Sakabo, and they used to do a, a once a year annual event called Bavard's Got Talent in like, in 2020, and then in 2021, and then COVID, and then they decided to, to not do it anymore.
Right, right.
So me being on the board, I like the name, and I asked them, could I revitalize the brand?
That's awesome.
You know, and, and, and put, bring it under a new format. That was one side of it. Another side of it is, I'm part of the American Legion, right? And being a retired veteran myself, I also call, you know, remember when the USO used to do the talent shows for the veterans? That, that was the president back in 1941 said, hey, let's go do these morale shows. And so the USO, that's how it built up its brand. So it's really kind of calling on the spirit and the intent of both of those efforts, right? You know, what the USO did with their military talent shows around the world to entertain veterans for morale and engagement. And then also with the newness of America's Got Talent, Bavard's Got Talent, and just saying, hey, Bavard County, we got talent.
Heck, yeah.
There's talent here.
Yeah.
And, and doing a monthly showcase is the new format. Because, and we've had a wonderful first show already, the talent that was, you know, showcased there was wonderful. So we're doing this because we want to have a quality event, monthly event, and we want to spread the word and say, hey, come showcase your talent, come out, have a good night on the town, enjoy the variety of talent, the diverse talent we have in this county, you know, and, you know, and bringing those elements together, we got something that's pretty magical.
I love that.
Bavard's Got Talent.
Heck, yeah. That's, that's really how you connect the arts itself and put Bavard on the map. So that's, that's how you do it. That's beautiful. Definitely. I'm intrigued.
I mean, so you've been doing a number of events under Amped Up, right? I think I've counted you. You do your monthly, your annual she...
Yeah, Connector.
Connector.
Connector, where we're connecting women businesses, small, large, just coming to network and mingle, and just meet each other. But we're going to knock it to quarterly. So the next one will be hopefully October. I think we're doing the next one. But that's the goal, you know, and that's also a nonprofit. And I also have the other nonprofit, Amped Up For All, where we just connect, well, we amplify people that are like, not, just anyone that just needs help, pretty much. It's not really solidified, but you know, it's official. But the goal is to connect with you and other people to bring it more to life, you know, so, yeah.
So that, so it sounds like there's a good connection here. Let's connect up Bavard's Got Talent
Yeah.
with Connector and things that you're doing. And hopefully, by working together, we can all, we have a really great committee, Coordination Planet Committee, and they all have their businesses, diverse talents. Shout out to, to Kimberly Ellis, to Juliette Thompson, to Ashley, to Rasan Higgs, to Diame, who was the DJ, Rasan is the host, to Michaela with the Positive Energy Arts Foundation. We have a very dynamic, and so hopefully we can add you and what you're doing to the mix. And by doing this, we create a magical event that becomes the springboard and the catalyst to future support, that we support one another.
Yes, absolutely. I'm here for it. I'm here for it. So if you have one superpower, which one would you pick? I'm just curious.
That is a great question. Man, you know, I did have an answer to that, but I think I'm, I think I'm changing. It's almost like the five love languages kind of question.
So what's your top two?
My top two? Are you talking about like real superpowers?
Real superpower.
Or like human superpowers?
What's the difference?
Like, like my gift thing now, your gift thing?
No, I'm talking about...
Real superpowers.
Real.
Okay. I would love to be to fly.
Okay.
And I would love to be able to be immortal.
Ooh, why?
So I could see history and live into the future and just be a sage, just...
Okay. And why would you want to fly?
Oh, because I think it's just, I've, I've been skydiving a few times. It's just be nice to be able to fly and see the world.
Wow.
What about you?
Well, this is not about me.
I know, but I'm curious.
No, no, no. Well, let's get to the other. Wait, wait, before we get there. So what about the human, you said the human superpower, which one would you pick?
Wow. So that was a little bit tougher, tougher, because it has to do with sort of gift, gifting. But I would say the superpower of connecting people.
Okay, okay.
You know, and, and organizing.
I like that. That's good. That's good. Okay.
You?
Oh, well, nice to meet you. Hello. Okay, so let's see, as far as, you know, some superpowers itself, some real superpowers, I would say, I would say maybe to be invisible. And I say that because sometimes I don't want to be seen, and I want to get things done and just go, and you know. But I also want to be in a room where I'm not there, just to just feel the atmosphere and just see how people are. Just, I don't know, so I can learn and just, and take that. And then the other one, I would say, let's see, I would say I wish I had the power to, just in my mind, just solve, or just to solve issues.
Intelligent.
Yeah, just intelligent, just like some AI. Like I just want that in my head.
I like that.
I just want to know, not know everything, but I want to be able to, if it's a question, I can resolve it and just, you know. And then the other two for me, more like humans, I wish I can heal others spiritually, you know, internally, like, you know. And then the other one I would, more on the work side, I feel like I, I want the power to, you know, I like, I like the organization. I want to make people visions come to life. I like that.
That is, that is, wow. The conversation just got really deep up in here.
That's why I said, don't, don't ask me.
Well, that's a good answer. See, look, she's got a microphone in front of her, too.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Hello, hello, welcome to Amped Up Live. This is about me now, episode 118.
That's right.
No, but you know, yeah, I just, and I think those type of questions will help people understand more a little bit about you, like what you feel, like a side of what we're doing here for the government or giving back or anything, but just really like feel you is deeper than rap, politician rap.
Yeah.
But you know, but speaking of music and all that rap stuff, another conversation and topics.
Yeah.
What's your, what's your favorite genre?
Uh, ooh, my favorite genre? Uh, ooh, my favorite genre? I like it all, really. I it's hard. I know what I listen to the most, but I, my favorite, I like it all. I mean, I definitely love hip hop. I'm a hip hop, uh, you know, born and raised hip hop from, you know, we talk about OutKast in nineteen ninety three when I started college. You know, I I talk about when N W A and and uh Tulak Crew dropped in nineteen eighty five.
Okay, okay, let's slow down now.
I mean, yeah, and how hip hop changed from that time and, you know, Run DMC, I love LL Cool J. Um, but then I I love country music. I love country music, you know, and I love the the blending of the way that music has is blended uh in today's genres, you know. Um, but I love um smooth jazz and a good, um, not really, I'm not gonna say like pop-pop, but I like singers, I like artists. Right, like a John Mayer, Waiting on the World to Change. You know, a lot, so I I just like a nice vibe. If I had to choose, you know, especially, and I, my, my natural curiosity, I like new things. I wanna be exposed to something that that moves me, like, I mean, it's Afro beats. Now it's like crushing. Such a vibe, right? You know, and then learning how to do, I was just in Las Vegas this past weekend, and we was teaching, I was teaching people how to do the Tamiya dance, right?
Tamiya dance? I don't really know it, but I do.
But 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 teaching them, and it's so funny because as you learn, it's, you think it's fast, but in reality, it's slow. And so teaching them how to catch it and slow it down, and and it's, it's so funny, cause the more you do it, the slower it gets. You're able to see it clear. And it's not, your feet are not moving as much as you thought it would. And it's such a metaphor for how we learn in life.
Slow down because.
And your way you slow it down is through continuous engagement, continuous repetition. Repetition is the mother of all learning. So the more you do it, then it's like, oh, it's slow down. Like I, 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 I'm in, I'm in business now and I got a learning curve in what I'm trying to learn in my business, but the more I do it, the, the more proficient I get at it, the more comfortable I become, the slower it gets, the more I'm able to see the, the chessboard, the chess pieces, so.
You're very inspiring.
Thank you.
You know, you show that you're a great person, you're very well-rounded, you know, you're a leader in the community, you're councilman, we're gonna speak into existence.
Okay, I receive that.
I just wanna know, what's your intake on homelessness? You know, that's here in Brevard, you know, it's not as evident as Atlanta, of course, but how, what is your intake on that?
It's a very, it's a very tough situation and uh and it's one of those issues that uh is gonna take a consistent longstanding effort, uh because you have uh my first instinct, basic instinct about homeless homelessness is it has to do with resources and and the use of resources and uh human potential. Um, and ways that we can maybe potentially help uh folks to get back on track. You know, that's my first instinct, but I know that's not the only the only issue that's involved with it. Of course, there's, there's mental health, there's um, um frustrations that people, and they just sort of in a sense just throw their hands up and, you know, choose a totally different method. But uh even with those, uh I would say identification of issues, we still have to try to come up with solutions as a way to try to make it better.
For sure.
Right, um, so, um, I think that you've heard me talk about it a little bit, you know. I I believe that there's some people where a workforce development center could be a way of doing outreach. It's not gonna help everybody. But I do believe there's a few people that if they had a place where they could go and realize that that's gonna help them to elevate themselves, they may just plug in and and give it a shot. But without having that, that opportunity there that could reach the everyday person, we don't know. So I think that, I think that there's maybe a situation to do uh supportive housing, right? With with counselors that's going to uh help people that in there, but they have to sort of progress through sort of a life coach to get back on track again, back to that. And then, and then, and then I have some other sort of innovative ideas that uh that I'm sort of you know, working on inside of my head, but I do think that once we can maybe identify, maybe a few of the reasons why we can't stay there, now we have to try to come up with solutions to help the least of these, help as many as we can to get back on track.
Yes, wow. I love it. I'm definitely here for it. You got my vote.
Thank you. You live in Palm Bay.
Wow, don't tell the world.
I'm sorry.
I live in Africa. But no, but you know, I move, I travel. I used to live in West Melbourne, so you know, that's just for now. I'm just comfortable where I am. But you'll never know, you never know. And I do, but my business is here in Melbourne, so you know, it matters, it matters. Where I'm paying taxes here too.
That's true, that's true.
Now that I think about it, wow, that's a long story. Neither here nor there. But you know, and being that you really care for a place that you're not even from here, but you've invested so much time in being a leader in this community is really touching, because like even me, I'm not from here, but I invested so much. And I love that. And people are like, why do you, why? Because it's not really about the place, it's really about me. I really love it. I would do this anywhere I go. I am committed and I wanna build. So that's just, you know, and it shows that you're loyal.
Yeah, I do, I do lead it, and one of my business, Impact Leadership Group, I actually do sort of leadership presentations. I love John Maxwell. One other book, uh authors that I really love, and one of the things I talk about, you kind of, we kind of have these three circles of leadership, right? You have the circle of uh, and let me say it this way, the most important person that we have to learn to lead is who? Ourselves. It's ourselves, it's the most important person, and we have to be able to do that. But you got this circle of you. You got this circle, another circle of interrelationships, like maybe small relationships. And then you got this other circle of organizational leadership. But when you put all three of those circles, concentric circles, when you get to the middle of those three circles, who's in the middle? You. So, so no matter where you go, no matter where you are, there you are.
You, you and your universe. Oh, that's deep.
Yep, yep. I love talking about it.
Now, before we close it out, what's some advice you can give to, say, young men in the community? That's looking for guidance, that doesn't, you know, we have knuckleheads here in Brevard, especially in Melbourne, you know. And that's another topic, that's another episode we'll talk about, you know. But I do wanna know, what's your, some advice you can give to young men that are like struggling to find you know, the right way, the light?
No, that's a, that's a very deep uh question and it's, and and the answer is very uh is multifaceted, but here's here's one thing that I would say is that we have to help our young men understand that there are other alternatives to get to where they may wanna go. We have to help uh uh young men, particularly young black men, and I mentor a few of them, and a few of them helping with Brevard's Got Talent. And that's, and that's one of the ways that that I'm helping them to, and myself. You know, cause I'm there to develop by uh expressing themselves, being creative. And actually creating something from nothing that's gonna produce revenue. You know, produce, you know, opportunity for others. Right, and so it's, it's a couple of things, that give back, feels good. And then being able to help yourself feels good. So what I, what I try to do with young men, I have another young man who uh he he's, he's really trying to figure out his purpose, you know, uh so I I I provide books, we do, I do books readings with him. And um and I help him to not just say, I don't just say, hey, read this book and do these things. It's more of let's read this chapter, and then I want you to give me what your takeaway is from this, because, because there's power in the tongue. There's power in helping people to talk themselves out of a situation that they are currently in and sort of manifesting themselves into maybe hopefully a better situation. And also realizing that it's not easy. And 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 I, and I think that, I think that's one of the biggest things that a lot of times people want life to be easy. And they, and uh I got a book, I'm gonna write on this eventually, but it it's, you know, we, we wish that it was easy, we want it to be easy, and it's not. So it's almost like giving them a dose of real reality. You are in a situation that you're in uh because of either it's lack of exposure, uh maybe lack of empowerment, uh lack of 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 education that's gonna help you to elevate. So with realizing all that, and then it's like, hey, you may be, you're in the fight of your life. It's the fight of your life. So I'm not gonna try to sugarcoat you and say that we're gonna just go get a job and it's gonna solve everything. Gonna just go, go get a hustle or whatever, and it's gonna solve everything. You know, life is a ever dynamic, ever evolving, ever growing entity, and we have to learn how to deal with it best. So, so like I said, it's a multifaceted answer, but the, it really says, plug in. Let's try to do something different from what you've already done. Cause if we wanna help you move to a different place, we're gonna have to uh analyze maybe what you've done and then say, now let's do something different.
Right, wow, wow. I'm just astonished. Like you're really, you're, you're full of knowledge.
I I, this is, this is all learned. This is, this is me stepping back and really just being humble and thank, and thanking God for helping. I've read, I've read some books, cause I was not always like this. I've read some books that kind of helped me to say, bruh, be humble and gain perspective, gain, gain perspective so that way you could be an enabler and not just you know, boiling the china shop kind of thing.
I I believe it. I believe it. And the fact that you can share that knowledge with me and many other people is, is a gift. It's beautiful, you know, I love that. So what's a quote you live by? You know, day to day or daily that someone has given you or you've read or anything that you, that you hold dearly to?
Wow, um, to whom much has been given? Yeah, yeah, I I, and I, I came across that quote when uh the former mayor of Atlanta, Andy Young, wrote his book, Easy Burden. Andy Young was the right-hand man to Dr. King in the Civil Rights Movement. And Dr. King would say, hey, we're gonna, we're gonna march in the streets, and Andy, you're gonna go negotiate in the suites. That was his strategy. A lot of people understand that as a strategy of the Civil Rights Movement. And so Andy Young, in his book, Easy Burden, I read that in college. That was his, one of his favorite quotes. And I liked it, I started studying on it, and uh yeah, it's, it's something that I, that I love, yeah.
Wow, well, there you guys have it.
There it is.
Pastor Smith.
City Council first. Council first. Let's start there, and then we'll see where it goes.
Oh, yeah, it's going. See, we're gonna manifest it, as you see. It's all, it's all here. Well, I definitely, definitely wanna thank you so much for your time.
No, thank you. I'm glad that we was finally able to connect. And uh, and you're doing such wonderful things in the community with your personality, your spirit and your event, so.
We're just getting started, you guys.
Let's keep going.
Yeah, thank you. So where can people contact you, find you on, you know, anywhere? Social media platforms, email number?
Um, all of my social media is branded uh Marcus uh for impact, that's M A R C U S. The number four and impact with an I, so uh with us on LinkedIn, Facebook, uh IG, look me up there. And 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 soon as I really start to get things figured out, there, there hopefully have more opportunities that will uh be things that I'll be able to share with the community.
Beautiful. Well, thank you guys for tuning in. As you guys see, we have Marcus Smith here, councilman for District One, so make sure you guys go out and vote, it's important.
She's wearing a shirt.
So yeah, thank you guys for tuning in and we'll see you guys next time.
All right, peace.